Oh, we're up to five to seven now.
Jeremy, on that agenda, when you've talked about the continuing workshop, are we going to be looking at any more of those suggestive recommendations from the commission members that you had passed out?
Um, no, no, that was kind of passed out for your information on what's happening on the state level.
Okay.
Because I do know that the legislature is actually picking up that this session, so. Yeah, it'll be interesting. My gut says is most of those things will pass, but I did hear that there's some opposition because of Maine has a pretty home rule. You know, into into the constitution and to make it. A lot of that stuff would kind of go against home rule, so we'll see how that plays out in the legislature, but that's where the legislature is heading. And if it wasn't for home rule, I would think they're gonna jam that stuff down everybody's throat.
Oh, so home rule sounds like it's gonna be blocking a lot of it.
Well, yeah, the legislature can't really, the state can't really tell a municipality what they have to do when it comes to municipal ordinances and things like that. Leave that up to municipal government and fair amount of that. That came out of that commission was would, for the most part, go against home rule. Where, you know, well, you, it's the municipality that gets to determine what zoning is going to be the town, not the, not the state of Maine, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens. But that's the, I think if, I think they have the votes likely. They would definitely, if home rule wasn't a factor, but we'll see. All right.
Okay. It looks like we're past five now, so we can get started. We are here for the planning board meeting. Town of Camden for January 6. First, before we jump into the agenda items, we will take any public comments on non-agenda items.
I've got none.
And I'm seeing none from the board here. Everybody's very busy. Okay, we will then move on to the first item for action on the agenda, and that is to open a public hearing. We will first hear from Jeremy, who will introduce the proposal. Then we will seek any comments from members of the public, if we have any. You can comment via Zoom or snail mail, email. And even the YouTube chat feature, and we'll be monitoring all of those. You must identify yourself by name and address if you wish to comment. All the comments will be directed through the chair, that's me. And we will go through that comment period, and then we'll have a period deliberation for the board, and a second comment period will follow. So right now, I will then just turn it over to Jeremy, who will introduce the proposed ordinance change.
All right, thanks, Ethan. I will say I got a note from Anita reminding us that she was not going to be here today. But I think she was, based on the last time we had these discussions, she was in favor of all this stuff, just so everybody knows. So, yeah, today is, what I'm proposing is a zoning ordinance amendment to Article 10, Section, it's Part 2, Performance Standards Generally. Section 1 Environmental, 2A to soils and earth moving and erosion control. We have a pretty not a whole, not a very robust standard right now for erosion control. And I think everyone understands the need for erosion control to protect water quality, protect our infrastructure, meaning catch basins and ditches. And you look at Hosmer Pond and McGunt cook in the river and the ocean, there is a need for, I think, a much better ordinance than we have. We had taken, I had taken this through the planning board, public hearing process a couple of years ago. And then it died at the select board over an issue with agriculture, that it didn't apply to agriculture, as I recall. Agriculture is regulated, erosion on agricultural farmland in the state of Maine is regulated and handled by the Department of Agriculture. And there's the whole Maine right to farm law. And those complaints on erosion and those kinds of issues are directed, would be directed to the Department of Ag. And then they work with the farmers, so it's specifically exempted in the state erosion control law, too, the DEP law. So that's why it does not apply in this case either. We can't regulate them. Actually, there's movement afoot in the legislature to actually make the Maine right to farm law more robust and remove even more municipal control over agriculture, so. So that's what this does. Again, the existing language is very, not very robust. It just talks about avoiding erosion and significantly altering existing patterns. What I've done is I've drafted, and we talked about it before. It pretty much mimics the state erosion and sedimentation control law, which is requires the installation of erosion control, whether it be silt fence or erosion control mix, berms, or whatever, to address erosion. And it requires someone to cover temporarily exposed soils that aren't worked for at, for a certain period of time. What the ordinance also does, it does adopt the main, two main erosion and sedimentation control best management practice manuals as the minimum standards for erosion and sedimentation control law or work in town. That's what this does. I have heard no comments from anybody on it. I assume that this would pass probably the traditional in Camden, it seems lately, like 70, 30, or 80, 20, or somewhere around there. And that, that's my perspective. I mean, it's a pretty significant thing. We have some unique resources. And we need to protect them, and right now it's a, we're getting compliance by not twisting arms, but telling them they need to just do it. Otherwise, we're gonna reach out to the DEP, so. We're getting good compliance on it, and I'd like to just codify this, make a better standard requirement in town. That's what this does. Again, I've heard no comments from anyone, and that, that's it, Ethan. You got any questions or anyone have any thoughts or whatever? Feel free.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Do you want me to try to share my screen?
I think for just this one portion, if we're gonna move into the public hearing portion in a second, it would be helpful to have it up. Most of the board members probably have it.
I'm looking for it here.
It's on the second page of the agenda is one place.
Oh, I know, but for some reason lately, my, my Zoom sharing isn't, isn't totally accurate. It's not, it's not, I don't know if someone has it in front of them, because I see it. But I don't think you guys can see it.
Oh, I have it up.
Can someone share it? Yeah.
Oh, let me.
Chance?
See if I.
I don't know why this is. I gotta figure out this problem. I thought I had it figured out. It's like not acknowledging any of my PDFs that are open. Eric might have just acknowledged one of them. I think it did.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, it looks like you're starting to screen share now.
Perfect.
Okay, so any of the board members have any questions for Jeremy before we go into a public hearing or to the public comment portion? Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I had a question. I was looking at Section A2. At the bottom, that talks about, you know, protected natural resource as defined in, and then gives you a reference. I wondered if it would be helpful to, to actually put the definition in the language here.
That's tough. I mean, we could. I don't think it's necessary, to be honest with you, Andy. That definition is probably a couple of paragraphs plus, you know, a handful of bulleted points. Protected natural resources, that's gonna be in the Natural Resources Protection Act, which is a DEP, you know, law that they implement. So these are things like lakes, streams, and streams have a definition. That's the challenge with trying putting in that definition. Is because then you'd have to actually go get the definition for streams as well. So it's kind of a, it would end up being multiple pages long, would be my guess, just in that. So normally in, in local ordinances, when you're trying to pick something up like this, you just use as defined in, in state statute, so.
Yeah, do you ever put a hyperlink in there so people can go straight to it, or?
You don't, we generally don't put hyperlinks into a code of ordinances that gets codified, but certainly we can. You know, I am gonna plan on ramping up our website information on the erosion control and can certainly add a link to it there. I think most people know what these are. These are wetlands of certain sizes. They're streams that have defined banks, generally a mineral bottom devoid of upland vegetation. Have aquatic insects in them.
I would, I would say probably most people don't know all of those things, but, but, but understood that for brevity's sake and then for the sake of our ordinance, I would say that's probably, you know, this is very common in the way to go. But yeah, I think it's great to, anytime we comply or give a link like Andy's suggesting perhaps on the website, Jeremy would be great.
Sure. And stormwater conveyance for you folks, I don't know if you know, I mean, that's just what that is, is would be a ditch in the public right of way, or, you know, a storm drain system town has. You know, that carries stormwater down a street into a pipe and then, you know, outlets it somewhere, either generally those get outletted into a resource. So that's why we included stormwater conveyance system in there. I think it's important. Protect those as well.
Thanks. Anybody else on the board have any questions or comments for Jeremy? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment portion of the hearing. We'll check all our sources and see if we have any public comment. Jeremy?
No. Nope.
Okay, and I don't see anyone here on the Zoom meeting itself. Going once, going twice, three times, sold, no public comment on the proposed ordinance on erosion control. So we will now fully deliberate as a board. I would say for my part, you know, we've been over this before. I understand the, the reason why it was held up at the select board was agricultural. I definitely support the, the erosion control ordinance as drafted and appreciate Jeremy's bringing it back to our attention. And in the end, you know, this is gonna go to the select board for their approval and then, you know, or maybe not, and then on to the voters if they approve. So it's got a little ways to go still, but I think it's good to bring in the best practices that we've got. Anyone else have any comments? It's a really volatile issue, this erosion control.
I think we talked it to death last time, so.
Right. Yep.
What, what?
All right. Yeah. Well, if there's no more board discussion, we can go to a vote. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the ordinance as drafted and send it on to the select board for, for consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Need a second? Got it. I'll go around roll call votes. So Chris O.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
It's an eye for me. It's unanimous. We'll send that on to the select board for their consideration, and that closes item number two on the agenda. Erosion control ordinance.
Ethan. I appreciate that. I have one non-agend item, and I'd rather just jump back into it if you don't mind before we get in here. I just need to briefly say something about another ordinance that I need to bring to you. Is that all right?
I'll, I'll allow it.
Thank you, sir. I, I mentioned this before. We have to, DEP and the state legis, and the legislature made some changes to Chapter 1,000. That's the short, minimum states' minimum shoreline zoning standards and guidelines. And this requires a photographic record. So municipal ordinance, that's adopted person to, you know, shoreline zoning requirements requires an applicant for a permit for development within the shoreline zone to provide municipal permitting authority, pre-construction photographs, and no later than 20 days after completion of the project. They need to provide photographs as well. So that needs to get into our, into our ordinance, so I'm gonna draft probably for our next meeting. I know we're gonna be jumped up 20th likely, but maybe we can try to bang that out, or maybe we'll do it the, the hearing at the other. Time on, on the 20th, G would probably say, so. The first meeting in February, when we have, we'll have a hearing on this, this at that time, and I'll just give you some background then. Nothing we can do, we can't adopt this, we have to adopt it, so, but we just need to get moving on that. So I want to share that with you, and this is kind of important because the new rules from the Secretary of State and the Clerk's Office when it comes to voting for ballot, for the warrant, requires us to have pretty much everything through the select board by March 15. I'm hoping we can do some hearings maybe on the 17th of March and get the select board, have a meeting right after that. I don't know if we need them. But it's just, the time is, is just moving really quickly, and we just lost, I think, three weeks in what we normally have to get items to voters for June. So we're gonna be under the gun for some of this, and I do know that there's some zoning amendments that are gonna be tried to get through the process before then, so. Just be ready for that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Moving on then to the third item on the agenda, which is just a workshop. We're continuing discussion on proposed zoning ordinance amendments relating to lot size in the traditional and village extension districts. So again, I will turn this back over to Jeremy. He did send around the proposed changes. So you all should have that. I think it came as a Word document.
It did. And I'm sure.
And I will turn it over to you, Jeremy, again, for your explanation of this one.
Thank you. So we had talked about this a couple of, couple of meetings ago, and I think everyone was in favor of the, what, what we have drafted, what I drafted. This is to address, kind of facilitate, at least provide opportunity for some housing. You know, again, we never know what, if we do anything, will it create more housing in town? That's a big question mark. I mean, if you look at the price of land, you look at the price of labor and materials. You know, it's pretty expensive to build right now, so. Will it create housing? Will it create affordable housing? I don't know, but, you know, we do need to do, I think, what's right to provide opportunity for, for more housing. You know, we, we are experiencing housing, housing crunch, certainly, I think, a crisis. And the state's trying to do it, as evidenced by that information I sent to you guys, the commission that they established to try to address housing. I think they missed the mark on some of it, not looking at the labor piece and the, you know, cost of materials and all that. But they tried to frame it in, it's a local zoning problem. I don't, I don't agree with that fully, but I do think that we have opportunities to increase density and, you know, provide more opportunities. So rather than in the village zone, rather than looking at reducing the lot size from 10,000 square feet to something less. I think what we had talked about and what I had proposed would be to allow one and two family homes on a 10,000 square foot lot. Currently, the standard, it's up on the screen, a single family home, minimum lot size for any, any lot is 10,000 square feet. And a single family home requires 10,000 square feet. And then if you want to do a two-family home, in the two-family home, this is not two homes on the property, standalone buildings. This is two apart, you know, two units in one building, so a house that's been, you know, divided up to have two, two units in it. A two-unit would currently require 15,000 square feet. So the proposal in front of you is to have no increase in lot area for the two-family home. And just, in essence, it becomes a 5,000 square foot per dwelling unit. And so a multi-family would then require 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit as opposed to 7,500, which is currently required. And I don't think we should change the accessory apartment piece on this at all. I do think we ought to facilitate two-family homes if possible, and if someone wants to do a two-family and get an accessory apartment on the property, then, then I think that works. That's what that, that's what the proposal is for the village district. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, or you want to have a discussion. I assume you do. But this is in line with what we talked about the last meeting. I do think it's probably better than shrinking the lot size down to 5,000. If you look at the map that we had up, and I'll get it up on the town's website, too, of, of the existing village lots. It's, it was, I think, 80 to 90% of the lots in town are 10,000 square feet in the village district. And, and going less than that, you know, can, can really change the neighborhood. And so we're not looking to do that. We're just looking to give people an opportunity to have, add a second dwelling unit to their single family home if they so desire. That's what that is. Any thoughts or questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question, Jeremy.
Sure.
Um, so when, in your proposed wording, the two-family, where it says no increase in lot area, that means the two-family can be within the 10,000 square feet also.
Yeah. Yep.
And when you talk about a multi-family, that requires an additional 5,000?
That would require, that, what I was planning there was actually keeping it at 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And not, and, and so it would be actually 15,000 square feet required for a multi-family. The challenge, I families at three units say, I mean, we don't define family very well. Lots of communities have a definition of family as five people that are on, so, family that are, you know, related by blood or marriage. Or a family is defined as five people unrelated by blood or marriage that are living, cooking, you know, living together in a, in a dwelling unit. We don't define it that way in Camden, so it's possible, and I've, you know, we've seen it, where there are many, many, many more than five people that are unrelated, living together. And don't change that definition, which I really don't want to go down that road, because I think that, you know, we've, you know, we've decided on that definition for a reason in town, and I haven't heard a good reason not to go with it. But, you know, there's the potential that having 15 plus their cars on a, on a 10,000 square foot lot, if you, if you don't have to add per dwelling unit for that, for that multi-family, and I think that's a lot. That's why I kept that at 5,000 per dwelling unit. If that makes sense. I mean, that would all, a three-unit would require six parking spaces. You know, so it does add up, eats up a lot of land.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I was just following on from Pat's point. Why wouldn't you just say for the two-family, 5,000 square foot dwelling unit?
Because, because there may be, well, there may be home, there may be lots that are like 9,000 square feet that I think we could, would allow a 10, a second dwelling unit because they're grandfathered lot of record.
Okay.
And that's why I don't want to really do that.
Okay, so box those people in, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Ethan?
Go ahead, Mark.
So, I, I guess, what, what seems to be coming up here is that everybody's pointing out is it's confusing with the two.
It is.
On a separate line, so my suggestion would be single family slash two-family. 10,000 square feet.
Okay. And I hear you, and the reason I kind of did it like that, I'm, I'm not trying to recreate, although I think the wheel needs to be recreated in our ordinance, because if you look at development table, the way we have this laid out actually in our ordinance is kind of why it's phrased this way, Mark. But I totally get what you, what you're saying, so if I'm gonna, I'll, I'll change that. And what I'd like to do over time at some point, change our tables altogether. Because they really are complicated, they're very lengthy, they don't need to be laid out the way they are to get the information across. So I will take that, and I will make that single family, two.
Well, Jeremy, I would, I wouldn't hold off on that, though, because when we get to the next one and we start dealing with two-family and sewer and no sewer in the village extension, you're gonna have a separate line because they have different requirements.
Yeah.
And I actually think the consistency, although it may look confusing, I think the consistency is, is superior to the confusion in a sense, if that makes, if I make any sense, but.
It, it does, and that's why I did it the way I did it. The tables in our ordinance are laid out this way, and that's why it's pretty.
Yeah, because we do have those categories. We have a single family, we have a two-family, we have a multi-family, and then we have accessory apartment. I mean, those are the categories, and so I don't think it's, you know, the only thing I question is why single family says 10,000 and two-family says no increase. Because likely the same grandfathered lots would apply to the single families they would to the two-family.
Okay, fair, fair point. I will look at addressing that, Ethan. I understand what you mean.
So, you know, I, I, I'm all about making it simpler, but I think with consistency, we're gonna be listing two-family multiple times in this ordinance. I don't, I don't see a reason to move it onto a separate, onto the same line of single family for one part and not the rest.
Sure.
And then, you know, there, there are some very minor, the editor and me editorial changes you have after.
Keep in mind that this is not the ordinance actually that is put in place. This is just a, for the most part, just a memo showing what is existing and what we're gonna change.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have actual language. I'll, I'll leave out then these little minor things.
Yeah.
But looking around to the board for any other further comment on this.
I was gonna make, I was gonna make a suggestion on this, a single family and two-family with the 10,000 square feet. Can you put an asterisk next to it, and then at the bottom say, you know, unless grandfathered otherwise, so it's clear?
All right, that's what I'm gonna, I'll work with the town attorney and figure out a good way to make sure that, cover our bases on that. Yep.
Okay.
Understood.
And so just to be clear, we're, we're still at the, you know, workshop stage. And then, you know, perhaps is it gonna be the next meeting, Jeremy, where we'll have a, a final draft of the ordinance?
We could probably do that as a final draft, but I'd like to probably at least get you guys to I probably, we're probably gonna shoot for a hearing on February 3rd.
Okay.
Is my hope, so that maybe, I know the 20th is gonna be jammed up with two site plans.
Yeah.
We got the pier and we have Mount Batty Street, but the pre-apps were pretty helpful on that. So maybe what we can do before we get into those, we can just dive in very quickly or at the end, end dive in very quickly and look at the language that is drafted. Does that sound all right?
Thus, thus leading to a, a public hearing on the 3rd and of February.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I would suggest towards the end, so we don't make the, the applicants suffer through our process. It should be fairly brief, but we sometimes don't stay as brief as we'd like, so.
Yeah, and I may, it may have to push it out to the 17th, but I don't know, we'll see.
Okay.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Next one. The next one we had talked about, and this goes back, um. A while now, not, not a year, but almost, um. We had talked about the village extension, or maybe it's been eight months or so since we talked about it, six months. We talked about the village extension, and currently, um, what you have is the minimum lot area requirements for residential on sewers, ten thousand. It's forty thousand for no sewer, um, and the same for a non-residential. Um, and then, um, the current per dwelling unit, um, within that is single family. Again, ten thousand on sewer, forty on not sewer with no sewer. And a two family needs, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, and each dwelling unit would need forty thousand square feet. Uh, for a two family, so you'd need an eighty thousand square foot lot to do a two family home. Um, accessory apartments, um, there's no increase in lot area. Um, the exception noted, um, sorry about the noted above, I think I included it up here, um, right? Um, this is, um. Where, um. No lot area, um, is required except as required under shoreline zoning or it means subsurface rules. Um, so that's what that is about, um, we talked about that prior when we adopted the accessory apartments. Um, multi-family again, uh, it's not permitted when there's, where there's no. Uh, and congregant housing is not permitted where there's a sewer, um. And we had talked about it, again, we had a couple of workshops on this, um, I know Mark had some, um. Valuable hi- insight, he lives out in the village extension, um, I don't know if everyone else lives, but, um. So, um, I do know where Ethan lives, and I know where Pat lives, um, because I was past neighbors yesterday, but, um. So this is what we got, we, we had talked about it, I know there was some, um, apprehension about going down to twenty thousand square feet. Um, per dwell, our per, for, per dwelling unit or for the lot size and for the lot size. Um, the state minimum standard for a, um, lot, um, with a septic is twenty thousand. Um, we had ta- again, talked about it, um, and then it kind of died. Um, I'd like to kind of move this along, um, if we, if you guys want to, we talked about it at the meeting, Mark wasn't here. Um, and I had discussed the idea of, I think, what Mark was getting at in the village. Um, where you just allow one and two family on, on, on a forty thousand square foot lot. Um, we had that discussion, and, um, I think there was some, at the time, it sounded like. Everyone was kind of going that way, and then as the conversation continued. Um, I think everyone, again, Mark wasn't here for that, um, thought that actually just allowing going down to the twenty thousand. Probably makes most sense. So that's what this would do, um, is twenty thousand square feet if you're no- not on sewer. And again, um, would allow a two family home on, on, on the property, um. That's where we are, that's what I've drafted. Again, this isn't the actual language that would get adopted, this would get implemented into the table. Um, that is somewhat confusing, but we'll try to make it as clear as possible in the table. Um, that's what I've got and open for comments and discussion and thought from you all.
So. Wha- what we're proposing here is twenty thousand square feet. No sewer for two family also.
No, the two family under state law, and sorry, this is, this is why this table's so confusing in our ordinance, because you gotta, it's the per dwelling unit. So, single family needs twenty thousand square feet, that's gonna become the minimum lot. Under this proposal, the minimum lot size in the village extension on, without a sewer would go from forty thousand to twenty thousand. Um, and if you wanted to, um, if you wanted to do a two family home. On, in the village extension. Um, you would still need to comply with the state subsurface wastewater rules, which is a dwelling twenty thousand square feet per lot, so. Um, that per dwelling unit, so that's why the two family would actually require forty thousand square foot lot, which it currently would require for a single family home.
So why don't we say that?
Well, I think there was.
I, I agree with Mark on this, on this one, um, I, I think. For the two family, you would just list the, the. I mean, unless they're gonna say per unit.
It does say per unit. It does say per unit. Right here.
Oh. Still, I think it's confusing though, I.
I know, and this is the ordinance table that we're dealing with, and I, not be my preference to have it laid out this way, but we say. Lot area requirement, and then, and then below that, we have minimum lot dwelling unit.
I see, it says per dwelling unit in the head.
Yeah.
That's it.
Right.
All right.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So just, just read the ordinance is what you're telling me.
Yes.
I mean, it's there, it is, and I, I missed it, so I, I.
Yeah.
On that, so, um, yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I'm just curious why we're out of step with the state requirements right now, why we're at forty thousand, the state says twenty thousand on a single family.
Oh, well, I mean, you know, that's the town's, and, and I will say, there was a fair amount of discussion, or there's a fair amount of comment in the comp plan on this. Um, that encourages kind of the town to look at, uh, the village extent before reducing the lot size, um. But, you know, again, don't have to, municipalities, they don't have to be consistent with state.
Okay.
You can go greater, I mean, that's what the town wanted, I mean, the village. Typically are growth area, developing area, if you get the comp plan, that's what it speaks to. We have sewer in some of it area, we don't have sewer in other parts of the area, but it is under, in our comp plan, the area designated as a growth area. Um, and so, you know, traditionally, it's kind of been, um. You know, kind of that connection between the village and the more rural parts of town. Um, and so that's why I think it's kind of to preserve that larger lot. You know, larger in that, in that. That between zone, um. But I think that's the only reason, but you read, I do, I did, Jeannie pulled out a bunch of information from comp plan, and when it was discussed. Um, the comp plan was discussed, and it was pretty. Informative to read, and what I'll do is I'll also send all that to you, so you have that, um. You know, it, it does talk about, and I can just speak to it, it, it says, um, recommendations, um, one of them is. Um, traditional village pattern, if it's to be replicated in the village extension district. Um, should the minimum sized lots for lots not on sewer be reduced from forty thousand to twenty thousand square feet? Or less, it says, um, we can't go less. Um, because there's, on lots without sewer, um, but that's what we can get to, um. And then there's talk in there also about should public sewer be extended to some of the areas, um, and that's kind of beyond our, our purview. Um, but the lot size, that is your purview, and. You know, comp plans, it was done in two thousand seventeen, it takes a lot of time to develop those, and then I'll. Before you know it, we're gonna have to do another comp plan. But while you have a comp plan adopted, you are supposed to. Um, try to implement some of the recommendations that, you know, the community. Adopted when they adopted the comp plan, um, and, you know, we're taking, trying to take baby steps here, there, and everywhere to try to. Take away at some of those recommendations and get those to voters, um, and that's, that's kind of what this does, and we're hoping to try to. Um, again. You never know if this is gonna facilitate more development or more residential, but at least provide opportunity for some, um. That's. What I have to say on that one.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if there was something about septic systems and the way they work. That was driving, you know, people to want, you know, bigger lot sizes when there was no sewer, but.
So I think I can give you a much briefer explanation on that, I think.
Okay.
Way back when the ordinance was first, um. Put together, the idea was to, uh. Grow slowly and preserve space.
Okay.
Um, we no longer seem to be going down that path, so. Um, that's why, I, I guess the suggested changes.
Thank you, Mark.
I think that pretty much, Mark does a good summary, I think of, and I got a planning board minutes from two thousand five, and I think that summarized it pretty well. I think what you just said. You know.
And I think perhaps what, you know, what has changed is, is, um. You know, housing availability. Um, and affordability, and, you know, we, we're not talking about section eight housing necessarily, but we're talking about affordable housing, and. One of the thoughts is that by providing more potential lots, you may. Increase the supply to meet the demand, and that may eventually. You know, we're not talking about an immediate fix, but it may eventually help to stabilize. Some of the housing prices that we're seeing.
I, I don't see that personally, I just see people making more money. Selling, selling off parcels of land.
Yeah, I was gonna say with the way real estate is right now, I, I, I would feel you'd need a little more than that to help with affordable housing.
Well, I, I totally agree with that, I, you know, as, um. You know, as Jeremy has indicated, we're trying to take as many. Different taxes we can on this, and, and not any one of them is gonna be the silver bullet that's gonna solve any of these problems, but. Um, you know, again, we're not doing anything that isn't permitted by the state. Um, we're still, we're still observing those, those, uh, minimums. And, um, you know. In reality, we don't know whether. We get ten new lots out of this one or zero. Um, and none of those are gonna, are gonna solve the housing crisis by themselves, obviously. But, um, the question we're making, the decision that we have to make as a board is, um. Do we want slightly more dense, potentially more dense housing in the village extension? That's what it comes down to. And I, I am in support of that, um, but, uh, it's certainly possible for people to have a different view. It eventually is gonna go to the voters and the select board, so, um. That's, that's really, you know, it's up to us to recommend. Go ahead, Chris, so.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, I think some of this also, the, the lot sizes and things. Is similar to what we were saying with the open space. Uh, numbers that has, you know, there was a long period in Maine where. Where there was a sense of maintaining larger open lots. Um, which didn't really always work. Because you ended up with big houses on bigger lots. That didn't quite fit, they weren't really rural, and they weren't really village. And so giving the flexibility in this. Zone, like, it, it's not gonna guarantee that we're gonna get more affordable housing, but it will give people more options. And gives more flexibility. Um, and, and, you know, it also will allow more. Development. Um, through that zone. In ways that, you know, could lead, it will take. Other steps by the town with some intensives and other things to encourage. Smaller housing, but that's a whole nother conversation, this is just giving an option. Which I think is a great step.
Yeah, I see it as a good step. Too. I was just thinking, as far as affordable housing goes, there would be. Additions we would need also. To help promote that.
Yeah, there's, there's other stuff that comes, that's not so much from zoning and ordinances, but more from the town. In terms of encouragements and. You know, I mean, like, like Jeremy said, like, if we talk about, uh, uh, increasing sewer, that's not, that's not our. Conversation to, to start, but it would be a major factor to. Make other options possible.
Sure.
Yeah, and town, I mean, to be honest, town, municipal governments and town, town form of governments don't have a lot of. And when it comes to facilitating. You know, housing or affordable housing, I mean, our options really lie in, in your zoning. Um, to, to facilitate things, and, you know, we. Some communities I laid out before provided some information on affordable housing overlays. Um, and those kinds of things, those, those are where you. You know, um, some credits, or you get some reduction in parking requirements, or those kinds of things. Um, I, you know, again, those, look at those, but, I mean, I think from a. Straight up, what can we do, um, you know, on the municipal level, and that's just to tweak ordinance to try to. Facilitate opportunity, um, and again, you're right, it may not be affordable. But, you know, a fifteen hundred square foot. You know, home or twelve hundred square foot home built on a twenty thousand square foot lot. I mean, you're looking at construction prices that are, you know, through the roof still, but. You know, a fifteen hundred square foot or a thousand square foot home is somewhat reasonable, um. I mean, not everyone's building those, I mean, I got, we're gonna get a permit here soon for a ten thousand square foot home, um.
Yeah. And, and I know, I know, I was the one who raised the, uh, specter of affordable housing. I, I did later focus on density of housing, which I think is really more what, what this ordinance addresses, I think that's the way to frame it. Because what we're looking at is housing density, and what we want as a town. And, and it's, it's very possible, like I said, to have a different viewpoint and say that that district should remain as it is. Um, and we'll see how the town votes on it, um. If, if we do send it on to the select board, but it is more of a density issue, it may have an, uh, an effect on affordable housing. But we certainly can't quantify that.
Well, Ethan, I, I think you touched on something there that's, that's important, you know, we're looking at. The, the focus here seems to be affordable housing. And how to increase density in town, and, uh. You, you know, is that because the population is actually increasing? Cause I don't see that, but the other thing, I mean, that we're. You ought to be looking at is what is it? That we want as a town? What do we want this town to look like? You know, what, what? What do we feel is important?
Right, and I, and I do think that Jeremy spoke to that when he met, when he referenced the comp plan. And the suggestion that we do bring the village extension in comply, you know, down to the state, uh, twenty thousand square feet. Um, and, and I think Jeremy might have even mentioned even lower, but we can't do that. Um, so I think that's, that's part of it, and, and again, the comp plan is an imperfect document insofar as. The second it's put into ink, it's, it's, uh, essentially, um. Well, it's, it's already, um, lost some of its, its novelty and, and, and currentness, and so. Um, we can, we can talk about that and, and where we go with the comp plan, but if I'm guessing, you know, from the, what we're seeing. Um, I think that housing density is going to be a continued focus of the planning board. Um, and, you know, over the course of the next twenty years or so, with, with another, with the rest of this complaint or another complaint coming up. Um, you know, I think we're gonna continue to look at ways where we can, um, provide people with options. Uh, to build on smaller lots and closer to town or in town, we've already done some other things. Towards that end with the accessory dwellings and that sort of thing, um, and by relaxing some of these standards. Um, we may see. More development, now whether that's a good thing, that's, you know, certainly within the purview of each board member to decide. And of course, then the individual voters.
I have a question, Jeremy, about accessory apartments.
No, Jeannie.
In the, um, the, in the village extension. When we added accessory apartments to the rural districts in the. Village extension. The lot sizes were a minimum of forty thousand square feet, which could accommodate two dwelling units. Does the state consider an accessory apartment a dwelling unit?
Yes.
Because then.
Yeah.
It won't fit on a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Right, and that's why no lot area increase, with the exception, that's why I have that there. And that's the exception up here. Again, which is what, what I talked about. Or main subsurface wastewater rules, which is the twenty thousand, so that's why I included that.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's in actually the definition of accessory apartments. Is where we have that laid out clearer.
Well. Doesn't that go back to the, uh, per dwelling unit? So.
In the village, we, we don't count it as a dwelling unit. In that. Additional square footage, lot square footage is not required. So it's not exactly the same thing. When you get. Away from sewer.
Right, so if you look currently, Mark, at, um. Let's go up here. So currently, on a dwelling unit, say you had a forty thousand square foot lot, right? Um, single, you had a single family home on a forty thousand square foot lot currently. And you wanted to add an accessory apartment. We would say, under the current ordinance, that you could add that for, that accessory apartment that's limited to six hundred square feet. Without needing to. Without needing to add what the current requirement of is this forty thousand square feet of, so to be the eighty thousand, we would say. Currently, you could, you could put an accessory apartment on that forty thousand square foot lot with a single family home.
Right, but with this change. You've got a single family home at twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
You've got an accessory apartment. Which would be another dwelling unit, so that would be, that would bring you up to your forty thousand.
Yeah.
Is that? Am I looking at that right?
You are.
So no change for that particular instance, right?
Right.
Which I think is actually appropriate, I mean, I, I. We could talk about the. What, what, you know, these accessory apartments, most likely, they're not gonna have more than two. Possibly three. Individuals living there, I mean, they're, they're very small, right, six hundred square feet, so. The chances of having more than a couple, you might have a couple with a, a young couple with a baby or something like that, but you. More likely, you're not gonna have two bedrooms in that space. Um, so you're probably only gonna have, but I don't, I don't think that's a terrible result. Um, again, just the whole idea of the sewer is, is not the sewer, it's, or when you don't have a sewer, it's, it's. How the septic works in, in the leach field. And that's, that's the reason for the, for the square footage, so that's, that's the biggest concern there. And I don't think it's, I, I don't, it, it is a little clunky, I, I guess with the. The difference between. Uh. What we have and, and, and what we're proposing and, and that it'll automatically trigger that. Um, I'm open to any suggestions of how to make it cleaner, but. I don't think the result is necessarily wrong.
Right, and I just, I just, I just wrote a note to check this to make sure that all works and maybe come up with better language, so. I do have a hope for that.
Well, why couldn't you say on the accessory apartment, uh, twenty thousand square foot, no sewer, and then. And then you just do the math, right, if you got a single family and you wanna add an accessory apartment, you need forty thousand square feet, right?
Yeah. I already say that. Trying to keep this in line with how we have it in our, in their tables elsewhere, and that's.
Yeah, I think that we already have that.
Right.
On the accessory dwellings, it's just.
Right, but the minimum lot size then would accommodate. An accessory apartment without additional lot area being required, and now it won't. And I think that's a difference, the, why we need better language.
Yeah, definitely.
And then I think Jeremy said he's gonna check and see if that, how the state looks at that.
Oh, no, they, they look at it as a dwelling unit and would need twenty thousand.
So it'd be forty thousand total.
Yeah, I'm just gonna check. Unquestioned, I'm gonna check and make, and. On, on the language that I'm using to make sure it works and, uh, make sure it's clear. Um, and so that, that's what I was gonna do, Ethan, that's what I was.
Okay, and so our hands are tied on that regardless.
Yes.
Yes.
For, for, for no sewer, but for sewer. Do we, I mean, accessory apartment at ten thousand square feet would be adequate. And we're trying, we're trying to promote that.
Yes. We've done that in town and, um, you know, again, the, the, the main issue for the. You know, my read on it or my take on it is the main issue for the. Lot size with the. No sewer is for the, the septic in the leach field, and so if you're on the sewer, those concerns aren't, um, as relevant.
You know.
Relevant at all.
I think that's a good point, Mark, I just noticed was maybe what I, we could also do for, so we've been talking about non-sewered lots. But like, let's talk about sewored lots for a moment. And maybe what we ought to do is I didn't adjust this two thing, we haven't talked about it, adjusting the two family.
Right.
Piece, so maybe we should just ramp that back into kind of similar. Similarly to the village where you get one and two family on a ten thousand. Or I could look at making that a five thousand square feet requirement instead of the seventy-five hundred per dwelling.
How about? How, how about this, Jeremy, on the two family? You say, no increase in lot area, sewored. Twenty thousand square feet, no sewer. Per dwelling unit, alright, accessory apartment, no increase in lot, uh. No increase in lot area, sewored. Twenty thousand square feet, no sewer.
Okay, that makes sense, Mark, very clear.
That seems better.
Thank you, Mark.
And maybe multifamily have to do the same there somehow.
Yeah, well, we don't allow multifamily, uh, out unless it's part of the open space subdivision, but. Yeah, I'll do the same for multifamily, um, on, in the village extension.
I think that does clear it up a little bit, thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Perfect, do you think the multifamily should be, again, similar to the village where it's at five thousand per dwelling unit in essence? Instead of seventy-five hundred, which current, which I had, the current standard is is seventy-five hundred up here.
For sewer.
For dwelling unit for sewer, make that go down to five thousand per dwelling, for sewer.
So it'd be a fifteen thousand minimum?
Yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah. So we did with the village.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's where we want, that's where we want more of the development, to be honest, is in the bill, uh, where it's sewored.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Good idea. Thank you. Good, number of eyes on this is helpful for me. So. Do I, you guys, I don't know if it's unanimous, but I can kind of work on this and get that going, I don't know if we need to belabor this anymore. Um. You, what do you think?
Yeah, I thought that was a good discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've, we've heard from everybody. Um, I'm, I'm good with, with the general parameters that we have laid out and so. Um, we can bring it, bring it back to the board for a vote.
Sounds good.
So. Well, let's, let's just discuss one, one other point here. Multifamily is not permitted. Uh, no sewer.
Correct.
So.
Only as part of an open space subdivision.
Yeah, unless, right.
It is allowed in circum, certain circumstances.
Yeah.
Just with a different process.
Yeah, but what, what if you have, I mean, what if you have? Yeah, I don't know, eighty, eighty thousand square feet property.
Yeah.
Um, why can't you have?
Three unit.
Two, two family units on that property.
Or even a three family home.
Yeah, why, I, I don't understand.
Okay, I can look at that, you need that from you all?
Would that be a subdivision?
It would, it would technically, but I, I think.
No, not if you're, not if.
Three units, three new units might be.
No, no.
It's a multifamily house, one single structure, that's not really, uh, if you have two of those, is that, um. That's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision unless you divide the property.
Unless you're actually selling off the pieces into multiple. So if you said, okay, I'm gonna put four, four multi, you know, four families. Dwelling and it's all one property.
I don't know, I think the Knox Mill Apartments, that was a subdivision.
Yeah, I know, but there's, there are apartments you're selling off.
But those old condos, if you're not actually selling them, is that your, what you're thinking?
The law says renting or lease. Or I mean, sale or leasing. For sale or lease, when you look at the state subdivision law, I'd love the state to change the law on, on. Units, building, yeah, it does.
Well, that seems like something that we could get an answer on, um, Jeremy, so I would take that to Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I, I can.
I don't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but, um.
I'll forward that to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
So Mark, so Mark, your suggestion then was to say on the multifamily, on the no sewer side. Twenty thousand square feet per unit, no sewer, was that your suggestion?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be opposed to that if it's allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be allowed if you didn't make it an open space subdivision.
Right.
That's what I think he's talking about.
But if you require it as an open space subdivision, it's not gonna encourage as much. Um, development of.
I, I think the intent of, of having multifamily only allowed as part of the open space division was to try to, um. You know, balance the, you know, the intense development with that rural character of the village extension in ways, I mean. That's what it was trying to balance, and I think that's why we haven't traditionally allowed them, but, um. You know, certainly, I think we could do maybe one, one, two, three or four family homes. Um, that may make sense in the village extension on non-sewered, if you get to the twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit. May, may make sense and even allow those not even as part of a sub, open space subdivision, but maybe limit them to four. That's a thought. I mean, yeah, if, you keep in mind, if you're doing a three family, um. Home, you're sprink, you're, you're putting a sprinkler system in.
Yeah.
So a sprinkler system on a, on a non. You know, public water lot is challenging, it, it can be done, but it, it. You know, it's tough to do that and pretty costly, um, just throwing that out there, so. Again, this is the opportunity that people can do it.
Talking about. You're talking about, okay, the, the same building, how, how about if you have? Three smaller buildings, three separate buildings. Or two, two duplexes.
Yeah. Understood.
Yeah, so that's a good question to run by our. And I'll work, and, and also to get more info on, but.
I will do that.
You know, I'm going to fall on the side of encouraging density, so if, if it leads to that, I, I would support it.
Sure. Alright, so maybe what I'm, I, I don't know if I'll be able to hammer this all out for a, a hearing and we have to have it ready. I think, I don't remember, twelve days ahead of time or something, um. I was thinking February third, maybe we'll go to the second meeting in February for the hearing on this, so we can really, um, have this be ready. Um, we could schedule the hearing and. You know, um, at the next meeting, schedule the hearing and have another follow-up to make sure everyone's good with this, maybe some new language on this piece. On the, the first meeting in February. Sound good?
Okay, yeah, I, I think we can probably still make that meeting, but I hear you, you got a lot on your plate and, um. You know, you know, as, as long as we get it in in time, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, does anybody else have anything on this? Go ahead, Chris O.
One quick question that I think I, I'm, because I don't have the whole ordinance in front of me. But Mark's queries about that. Would this have any impact on trailer parks or they're not allowed in village extension, I'm just, I can't remember what that. Comparison would be.
I haven't looked at it.
Well, if there's anything that would, we would need to consider if, you know, what Mark is just saying is if you get to say it where you're at four units, what's a unit?
Yeah.
Does this have any impact? I, I just am.
Yeah. I will, I will look at that, okay? And I'll follow up with you on it, I just don't know if that may happen.
Yeah, I, that's, I was just.
Bad answer.
It was a question to, to find out.
Not, mobile home parks are permitted residential use in the village extension.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look like we. Um. Regulate them in any other way, but likely in order to do. Well, yeah, I mean, it would be a regular subdivision in, um. We don't have any special provisions for mobile home parks that I'm aware of.
That's what I, that's what I thought, but I just couldn't remember.
We may, I, I, we, we do have a mobile home section in the ordinance, but I'm not really. Since I've been here, I haven't, I don't, I mean, I haven't looked at it very often, to be honest with you.
Well, the only reason I think about it is that there are some, you know, higher end mobile home parks that people are doing now that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that.
We do.
That this might be like a six unit thing or something.
Yeah.
Could fall into some of this.
Mobile home park ordinance, our ordinance requires twenty thousand square feet for a lot. Um, for in, for mobile home park.
Okay.
So that's consistent with the new.
That's getting right where we are.
Yeah. That is in, in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, this is, uh, near record time if we're all done here. Um. You know, I'll never frown on that, um, just wanna make sure everybody feels they've been heard on this one though, before we close the meeting. Um. I think we've actually given quite good consideration to all the, to the proposals, so, um. I think that's been. Handled very well, uh, I guess I need, uh, I'm gonna look, Chris O, my motion man for.
I, I will make the motion.
You gotta be quicker, Chris O.
Yeah. I was just, I was just gonna confirm that we are meeting on the tenth.
Thank you, Chris O.
Yeah, see, there you are, I always, I always run past that part.
I, I was gonna confirm that we're meeting on the tenth at ten AM. Per our agenda at, uh, Hart, twenty-six Harbor Road and then at ten thirty at Mount Patty Street.
Thank you, you're absolutely right, yes, we do have those two site visits scheduled, um, those are. Uh, open hearings, right, Jeremy?
Yes.
For the public.
Your public meetings, yes.
Yeah, public meetings, so, um, please remember that and not to discuss anything amongst yourselves, uh, privately. And everything on the record and more for information than for deliberation.
And you're bringing the donuts, Ethan?
I don't know, I think that was, um, that was Jeremy or Chris O, I can't remember who.
Mark's bringing the donuts on his boat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Big, speaking of that. Genie, what about the rum cake?
Baby Genie's bringing a rum cake.
I know, isn't it sad?
It really is sad.
That's, that's my biggest regret for COVID.
Wait till the CO, after COVID party.
Strong, 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 yeah.
Alright, Chris, so now you may make your.
Now I'm gonna make my motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Andy, alright, and all in favor of adjourning, Chris O.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
That's an eye from me, the eyes have it, we'll see you all in a couple, uh, well, on the tenth, it's only a few days.
Next Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Night, you guys.
Night.